September sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Welcome to the planning board. I'll entertain a motion for the agenda, please.
So, who?
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, our first item is a continued public hearing stormwater permit sixteen Man Hill Road. Mr. Tansley.
Good evening, members of the board. And chairman. What I have done here is I've responded to most of Peter's comments. With respect to the permeable pavement, I've made a modification to the plan. I'm not going with permeable pavement anymore. And the reason why I decided to do that is because the maintenance of it had the potential to be upwards of five to six hundred dollars a month. Depending upon how it was going to be required to be swept. And that I could not put my client through. So, we'll stand at pavement. I'm keeping the trench drain at the end of the driveway. All this runoff will get picked up. I'm still having the pipe. I bumped that pipe size up from four inch to a six inch. And Mr. Palmeri and I discussed that and thought that that would be the best way. I did analyze it. Mr. Palmeri hadn't gotten a chance to review that. But what it'll do is we're going to a four bay. The four bay, there's pre-treatment. This four bay has been sized for a tenth of an inch for impervious area attributable to it. And that's per DDP DMP standards. They roll it flow into a bio retention system, which is very similar to a rainwater garden. It gives ninety percent TSS removal or is credited with that. It'll overflow the grass layer. This'll pre-treat the first flush and then it'll be sent down through the buffer strip. The rest of the runoff will occur just as it had before. It'll still take the same route. It'll be routed through this buffer strip in the back. One of the things that we were required to get would be an agreement for the easement. That was another issue that was spoken about. That's the temporary grading easement. We have a signed copy with the applicant and the owner of the applicant of this lot and owner of that lot. I've got.
Can I just, can I butt in and ask a question? Is this a whole new plan that we, that you haven't submitted to us?
Right.
Uh-oh.
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm just asking. We don't have, I don't have any of that in front of me.
It's gonna, it's gonna be submitted.
Okay.
It'll have to be reviewed, but.
All right, keep going.
But it'd be a waste of time to go through the machinations of this permeable pavement when economically we're going to be forced not to be able to use it. So, that is a very minor modification. And my hope was that it would be favorably received by the board. I've got a revised O and M plan that's been updated. Going through. And also I, the drain cabs were also revised. And they're all updated. I have to resubmit them. But the outstanding comments were, were for the most part related to the permeable pavement, which is now being eliminated by the fact that we no longer proposing. So, that is probably the most effective and the most easiest way to dispose of those comments. The other comments dealt with the grading that comes along here. I clarified where the swales were. I added some spot grades. And Mr. Palmeri wants to comment about that. I believe that that's all squared away. And we've got the easement agreement. We've got the revised O and M for the maintaining of that line. And other than the permeable pavement, which is now obsolete, everything's been addressed. But if this new design will have to be reviewed by Mr. Palmeri.
Has the easement, so the cabs have been resubmitted, the easement hasn't been submitted?
That's correct.
And the revised O and M has not been submitted yet?
Right.
So, all of that has to be resubmitted for doing that?
I think it's taken, resubmitted tomorrow.
So, I think from an information point of view, it's just good to know what that's gonna look like when it comes in. But we'll have to, we'll have to hold off until we see it.
I still have, I, I sent, I sent the picture of the easement to town council for review and I haven't gotten any response back.
The picture? What, you mean the drawing?
Yeah, the picture of the easement.
Yeah.
I didn't get anything else for the easement.
Oh.
And so, this was sent to town council and I don't have her comments yet.
So, she's probably gonna need to see it written.
She's probably gonna, that's what I told her. She's probably gonna need to see it written, but I, I don't have any comments back, no.
Okay.
Mr. Palmeri?
Good evening, Peter Palmeri, from our engineers and land surveyors. As Greg just said, apparently there's a new plan. I haven't looked at, I haven't seen anything. I can go over my previous comments, but I'm not sure how applicable they are, I guess. Because I haven't seen the revision.
I would, I would probably hold off on that if you got a chance to see whether, because it does make sense to me.
It doesn't make sense.
Yeah. Any initial reactions to what you heard?
Well, I, I do think of the elimination of the permeable pavement is a good idea. As I said in my report, even though I think it is a good system, I don't think it's appropriate for residential use because of the maintenance costs. I did have a concern about the slope of the driveway and how practical it was actually to provide the storage, but that's neither here nor there anymore. I did have some comments about this, about the pipe increasing the pipe size, which I didn't mention. Providing this Roger control pad and a level spreader down here. Also an intermediate clean out. I don't know if that was added, but. The only, the other thing was the easement. I think it's important that it be reviewed by town council. And then if it's approved by town council, the board should get a copy of the recorded document just to make sure it's going the whole way it's supposed to. That's really about it. I think it, I think this is a plus because I do think the permeable pavement, I don't think was extremely practical in this application. And that looks pretty straightforward, but again, I have been looking at the cabs and the design.
And did you have another comment about additional samples or would that result?
The additional soil testing had been done.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. Is, is there now pavement on the adjacent property that the grading easement is on?
No.
Okay.
Only, only plain fill.
I think that's miney eye.
That's the pipe, okay.
Yeah. It looks like it does have a filter.
Okay, just, just wanted to verify.
Let's tell.
That'd be better.
Is there anything else you want to add?
No, we just haven't seen the stuff. And so, obviously, I do not have a draft decision because I, we can't, I can't write a decision.
Explain what we're writing about.
I don't know what we're writing about.
Really?
I mean, if it meets all, if it meets all the criteria, if, if this system comes back and Mr. Palmeri agrees that it meets all the stormwater criteria, I would propose to write a stormwater, favorable stormwater permit for another meeting. And grant the stormwater permit.
Could I ask a question from Susan Stone? My husband and I are in the land that I'm moving up right now. So, I'm trying to figure out.
Which land?
The sixteen man lot.
Oh, you own this lot, I'm sorry.
So, I'm, I just want to make sure I understand what's remaining because this has gone on quite a long time. Is it just at this point, the getting the easement through to town council and getting that passed? And then bringing that information back here after Peter's had a chance to look at it? Is that, there?
We have to resubmit this. Have to resubmit the drainage calculations, resubmit the O and M plan and submit the easement. So, all of those documents, we're just seeing this tonight for the first time. We won't normally make any decisions until we've had a chance to have it reviewed.
And so, we all need additional money for the review too, of course. We've had two reviews from the last money that was brought in and that money's all extended.
Are you, Mr. Tansley, are you clear cutting this entire lot?
No.
Promise.
Oh. The buffer strips are clear to that.
But the rest of it's clear?
Correct.
And because the septic system needs to be close to the road, that means the house, et cetera, is that far back?
Correct.
Because that's really the only place you could put the septic system on the property?
To achieve what we've achieved, yes.
Okay. Hannah, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, I, I'm still confused as to how we're gonna treat one when we have three lots and how it's not gonna spill over. I've sat up here for a couple of years now. Everybody tells me water's fine, water's fine. Everybody starts building and everybody starts complaining that we have water. This is a very wet area. It's wet today. I was over there. Again, I, I think that we need to make sure that people's houses are not flooded. We are in for this interminable rain. It seems forever. And the fact that you're only developing one at a time, it's, it seems counterintuitive to me. But I'm not an engineer, so I agree with that. And that's, and I'll wait to see what Mr. Palmeri has to say about the regards.
Ben?
In this latest iteration, could you, I guess, conceptually explain to me where the infiltration that was previously occurring in the permeable pavement, where is that now taking place?
It's taking place in this structure in here.
It's a new structure?
Yeah, right. It's, it's a, it's like a rainwater garden, but it's. It's a bio infiltration system. And there is various plants. The soil that is in it is as an engineered soil mix that has a large amount of nutrients. It's, it's based on compost, it's based on mown, and it's based on a sand element. And it, and it's mixed. It's a processed mix according by, by DDP regulation. And what that will do is it'll promote infiltration and it will support the plant vegetation. The plant vegetation that's in there, we've got switchgrass, a better rate, a cluster of red chokeberries. I also have, I'll, I'll show you the.
Are you gonna submit a detail of that with?
Oh, yeah, there is, there's a detail on the plan. I'll show you the detail. The pitch is worth a thousand square. Just to be able to make a little second. And just right here is the, the four bay. This is the bio retention system that I had mentioned earlier. And what we've got in, in here is a red chokeberry, a witch hazel and an arrowway. These are all shrubs. And they were specified on their ability to filter out salts, greases and oils, even metals. And so, this, this is a very effective way of treating the, the stormwater. And it's only gonna be treating stormwater from the driveway. So, it's not gonna be overwhelmed by other sources like from a roadway or even a rooftop. It's just strictly the driveway and all those, all of that stormwater, it gets pre-treated and then it gets treated and then it's released in the soil. And then through that, through the, the buffer, there's even more treatment. It's about a fifty percent more TSS removal credit. So, overall, the amount of treatment is about ninety-five percent TSS removal. So, this is, this is a very effective way of treating groundwater. And it also has the ability to retain the water quality volume and also to infiltrate. So, this, this is where, this is what's taking place instead of, to answer your question, instead of the permeable pavement. The permeable pavement is, it had more of a storage area and it knocked the numbers down a little bit better. But this will give you better treatment and it still meets the performance standards in that it's less runoff going, leaving sight in the proposed condition than there is in existing condition.
So, at what, I guess, what level is this new bio infiltration basin designed to over top?
At what level?
Yeah, in terms of your, you said it's.
Well, the.
The storage capacity, I guess, I'm referring to.
The top of the berm is at elevation fifty-five. There is an inward elevation at fifty-four point three. And in a hundred year storm, the elevation of the water is about fifty, fifty-four point five, maybe fifty-four point six. So, the depth flowing out of that, out of this basin, the depth of water flowing out of this basin over here, it, it's about, it's less than two tenths. It's about two tenths.
Yeah, so the only, I, I respect the, the concept of the new design. I guess, I mean, obviously, it hasn't been reviewed yet, so there's. But I just, I guess, my one concern before close to the next round is just kind of channelizing water to that back property line. It's just, we just gotta make sure that that's, that's done right because.
Right.
I know that overland flow into a budding properties along Christopher Lane has always been a concern. And that's with full tree cover right now. So, when that's gone, I think we just have to be mindful of now channelizing water to that location to make sure that it's not, we don't create, exacerbate a pre-existing condition. That's already a problem.
And, and, yeah, I, I did make a very concerted effort. And I mean, I'm conscious of that because that was a concern of mine as well. But if, well, you probably can't see, but I did design a swale right here so that all this runoff, the only place that it can go is downhill. And this is downhill and it'll go through this wooded area where not only doesn't get treated, but it also gets attenuated as well.
So, you're not gonna clear cut that?
We're not clearing this.
Okay, you're not, really, basically, you're not touching that?
No.
Well, I, I think that, I think I'm trying to follow Ben's question here is that if you look at a gray area, which was mostly permeable pavement, it was designed for certain volume of water to be infiltrated and not runoff anywhere.
Right.
And so, by eliminating that, you're taking all that water, pushing it down to your bio retention basin. Is that basin infiltrating the same amount of water?
No, it, it's not. But it's infiltrating enough of the water such that it meets the performance.
Okay, well, I guess we'll have to wait till Peter has a chance to look at it.
I'll go back and ask another question.
I think it looks good. Just, I guess, waiting on the, you know, what comes back from the, the review of the actual performance. But there, I can get rid of the permeable pavement and then all the, the maintenance issues, you know, kind of having to bring out that sponge once a month is, is good. And making all the things over to a bio catch basin or whatever the term of art is for it makes more sense.
Right.
I have just one question.
Yes.
Who designed the plants that you're going to put into this bio filtration rain garden?
The plants were chosen by myself based upon the DDP DMP stormwater policies. And, I mean, I can, I can get you, if you, if you want, I can make a copy of the page.
Yeah, I think we'd like to see the page and I think we'd wanna know the sizes of the plant material that you're proposing to put in here too.
Because on, in that page, it tells you that these, these plants that can tolerate ponding for up to about one or two days gives the tolerance to an ability to tolerate salt, taking up metals, oils. And there's, there's three different species and each species, they all overlap. But some have a better concentration in taking up salts. Some are better at metals, others are better at the greases and oils. So, there's a good mix there. These plants, they're, they're about, I'd say about thirty inches high. I'm sorry.
I'm familiar with plants, but I just wanna know that they're not going in as little sticks, that they're going to be a decent size.
No, they're, they're not, they're not sticks, but they, they should be at least thirty inches high. I mean, they, one of the plants, it, they describe it as kind of a base type of shape that has a lot of branches in it. And so, there's some variety there, but these plants are commonly used in mitigation work. A lot, a lot of it is with conservation, but they do the same thing here. It's, it's about cleaning the stormwater and purifying. So, and, and they're, they're common species. They can survive in moderate sunlight or heavy sunlight. And so, seeing that there is a wooded area around here, if, if they get a fair amount of shade, they still can thrive.
So, you're gonna provide a copy of that page and then you will mark the size of the, of the plants on the drawings?
Right.
So, it's not, not let the, or change.
Sure.
Ben, you also?
Yeah, I'm also. Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has something to say? Yes.
Marla Minier, twenty-nine Christopher Lane. I'm just curious about the homeowner who extended the easement. Was it the Terrell estate or is there a new owner of that middle property?
The middle proper, this property still remains part of the Terrell estate.
I guess my concern is that there's a new homeowner. So, this is the family that is selling the, the big parcels. I'm just concerned about what the new owner is going to say about an easement granted to this particular property. And that is, that's, that was my question.
Yeah, in the easement documents, this is a temporary grading easement. And it's for grading only. After everything's all built, that temporary easement goes away because there's no need for.
Marla, does that satisfy?
Yes.
I guess?
Wait, does it?
We'll wait until what it, town council is reviewing it, so we'll go from there. Anyone else? Where does the roof runoff go?
The roof runoff, it goes on, the, the front, the roof runoff goes onto the front lot and it goes into an infiltration trench, which is connected to the driveway trench and it's picked up and then it goes into that, into the bio retention area. But very, very little runoff from this infiltration trench makes it to it. A lot of that, again, you've gotta take over the, over the lawn. Plus, there is also, although we didn't model it, but there, there will be some infiltration taking place a little bit through here. So, very little runoff gets there. The rest of it runs off and it flows over the lawn and it's filtered through the screening plants and it's picked up by the swale and is thrown and is directed through the wooded buffer over that here.
Are you putting in a mounded septic system?
Just about every new system is mounded by definition. But this is, this is then filled up against the foundation so that you won't see a mound that would look like this. But this would be the front yard and the grade of the front yard slightly slopes up to the foundation. So, looking in profile, there will be a grade associated with this septic system. And it will be slightly steeper at the beginning, but then it takes off that to the base of the, of the house. So, you're not getting a mound like that. It's, it's just a nice gradual, gradual graded lawn up to the foundation. And we do this commonly so that it doesn't look like there's a mound. But by definition, if you have groundwater that's typical in the town's situation, which is down anywhere from thirty-six to twenty-four inches and by code, it has to be four feet above that water table, the bottom of the system. And then the system is at least another foot and then you need another foot of cover. You can see that you're easily two to three feet above grade, which that by definition is a mounded system. But in new construction, there are ways to blend the grading in and to hide it and to make it look nice.
How much fill will you need to bring into this?
I, I don't recall. A while ago, I'm pretty sure we did a, a cut and fill analysis. I think it was on the earlier designs that had the larger house in it. But I, I don't recall that exact number.
All right, does anyone else have anything they would like to say? So, if we're going to continue this?
So, we, as soon as we continue this again is October fourteenth. You say you have, frankly, everything ready to resubmit? Peter, does that give you enough time for, for comments?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I would to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the stormwater permit for sixteen Man Hill Road until October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty P M and to continue the action filing with the town clerk until November twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have our, our next item is discussion vote on McDonald Terrace.
I, I need additional one. We can't start and review until we get additional one.
All right, how much is that?
I'm going to about card a thousand dollars. And we get one every week, not twice a year.
Okay.
All right, Karen, we have a card verdict, but these are here.
Right.
So we're going on until we figure it out?
Right.
But that's not a couple of years, is it?
Nope, that's, that's not a couple of years.
So why don't we do, um, five minutes? How many people in the meeting minutes for September ninth, two thousand and five?
The second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Accounting.
I hope to approve the requisition of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to Mayor preparation for peer review of the residence in Fifth Place, Sixth Avenue. For sixty-two dollars fifty cents to Lou DiFranco for, for return of unexpendited funds from the planning board guarantee account. For one thousand and two dollars and sixty-six cents to Lou DiFranco for the return of sixty-one Florida Street stormwater fund. For thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents to W Mason for office supplies.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Bye.
All right. All right, now we have loads on the boards. Does anybody, do you have anything? All right, C P C met Monday night and monies were approved for the Titcher Garden, for the African Farm, for Archives, and for an Irish book. Wasn't a newspaper?
Oh, a journal.
A journal of some description. And believe it or not, twenty-one hundred dollars for more scrutiny than just about anything else. Somehow we can conceptualize twenty-one hundred as opposed to two point one million. I don't know what that is. And then the next one was the field, not the Bleakie Field, that came later. This was the, the ball field. Situate Little League came in at five-thirty Monday afternoon with a plan to put the ninety-foot baseball field behind Gates, the old Gates School. And I, for one, have a lot of trouble with that because we have yet to resolve the parking issues for the senior center. Basically, what they had before C P C was, it just wasn't ready.
So isn't some of that area, wasn't that spillover for parking if they needed?
Yes, yes, absolutely. There it is, right there.
Yeah.
And of course, nobody could quite ignore that. And, you know, you have recreation there, you have the senior center, you have the food pantry.
Little red schoolhouse?
A little red schoolhouse and, and so it goes.
Did, did recreation comment on that? Or did they, were they partners in that proposal?
That is a very good question.
It wasn't very clear.
No, it was not clear at all. Who was, it, it's sort of a moving target, if you will. And of course, I feel that it should be put off until the April town meeting, but then they go to sit here, oh my goodness, we have to do this right away. And when they came in the first time in June, it was two hundred thousand from C P C and four hundred thousand that would come from the Toll Brothers because remember they had appropriated four hundred for fields, not knowing where the fields were going to be. And now they have come back with the full six hundred thousand for this baseball field. And then they follow Title Nine, which, and what Title Nine has to do with equity, not the number of fields and who plays on what. So that's been put off until two weeks.
So what I'm confused about that is they can say we only have one Little League field. I doubt we had two. Am I confused?
We're all confused.
Don't we have roach, the, the water on me the gap, right?
Yeah.
That they just get, that, that one dollar free aid, isn't that, is that not part of the?
It's a water treatment.
Yeah.
I broke them both up, those are both town of Situate lands.
Yes, but they insist we only have one.
Well, it's a ninety-foot, so it's a regulation size. I think it's only the high school that has one.
I don't know.
And why didn't they think of this when they built the whole thing?
Well, the other issue to that, that of course, that goes to the school project and what's going to happen when they send those fields.
Well, I think that, you know, what worries me here is that it's not just the field, it's also, you know, what's our current parking problem? And nobody's really articulated a plan for this whole area, right?
No, they have not.
And one of the comments we heard when they were talking about the senior centers, they would use this area for additional parking. As they reprogram Gate School and all of that.
Campus.
Yeah. So without a plan, I don't see how we can endorse it.
Well, I told them they really need to come to the planning board.
But I, I think whoever asked, and I assume it's the town has control over this, you know, this whole parcel, but there's no, there's no forward thinking about what's happening with the rest of it.
No, there's no.
And so, you know, piecemeal, if you do this, you're going to end up piecemealing this thing and you're going to be in a bind somewhere at some point.
Absolutely.
Whereas if somebody would look at the whole thing, like a game plan for it, you could probably address it.
But they wouldn't want to put lights on there either.
The neighbors would go a little stir.
No.
So, all right, so that was.
Not really lights there?
There are lights in the tennis court, which apparently could be better, but that's the name there. All right, and then the next item was the Bleakie Field. And there's a, there's a little bit of contention about the appraised value came in for C P C at one point eight million and there was a back and forth and back and forth. But the whole thing has just been put off until next time. And of course, the selectmen haven't said yea or nay about whether or not to exercise their first option, first refusal. And the individual that wants to purchase it and put up six tasteful farmhouse houses on this property for two point three million purchasing, purchasing the property and then put seven other acres in conservation, which is probably a lot of rocks and wet ones, who knows? So that's, that's been put off. So that's all I know about that. Anybody else?
Well, I gave them a situate advisory, which was very interesting. And once again, a marijuana dispensary came up. And with a lot of contention, it's interesting because there's a lot of lawyers on that advisory committee. And, but what was really helpful was Michael Westwood. Jerry Kelly gave her bite to Michael to speak. And Michael is an owner of two dispensaries. He owns a money robin and he's got open one in Marshfield. So he recused himself of the vote, but he answered a lot of really cuckoo questions about like how do you get money and how do you get in and how do you get out? It got down to the, to the weeds so crazy, like how much does marijuana cost? And Jerry Kelly actually was able to kind of round out a lot of crazy cats and say, they have to rewrite the petition is what it comes out to, but they have to rewrite it for such a little forum town meeting. So Rich Bowman, I think Mr. Bowman is still indisposed, I'm not sure, but they have brought in another lawyer named Val Romano, who apparently is the weed order, is what he calls himself, that's all he does, is he likes to do marijuana dispensers. And this is what he does. And there was a lot of set to about home rule versus legislation versus, you know, how, how do you do this? So apparently there's going to be another discussion, which, which we will then see once again when it comes to before zoning, because it has to be zoned. The final thing that Jerry Kelly says your last stop is the planning board and that's it.
Right, so we're not going to see Article ten?
No.
We're only, we're only seeing Article eleven?
Yeah. So, so what they were saying is one should take it apart the others, they kind of have to get this all rolling along. It was an interesting, another interesting meeting, which we hear a lot of personal biases, which Mr. Kelly was very quick to squash and say, this is not what we're here for. We're here to talk about the audit. So interesting, if you can watch it, watch it, Michael Westwood had a lot of really interesting information.
I didn't think that they taped it.
Oh, they, oh, oh, I was hoping there's a.
I don't think they taped it.
Probably not, probably not. Too bad. It will be an interesting town meeting.
It will be, sure will. Okay. We'll put off your.
Yeah, why don't we let Mr. Burwick just say it?
Good evening.
Hello.
So you went before design review.
Last two to the end.
Yeah, and you were there. Karen was there. And so you have agreed to do what they asked you to do, is that correct?
Because the word is right out of my mouth.
Okay.
Absolutely agreed. We had a short meeting and basically they liked some of the features from the previous design that they wanted incorporated into the final design towards the final design. And we were in total agreement on what those changes should be. I believe you, you probably have these minutes from the meeting?
Yeah.
And that's how we proceed.
It was a very productive meeting, the people, we have three architects now on the town review committee and they, they know their, they know their stuff. And they specifically, this question was specifically posed to them. Do they feel that the change, with, with the changes more closely representing the original design, do they feel that those are, you know, substantial changes or insubstantial changes? They all concur that it's insubstantial changes. And so that's what I'm going to recommend to the board, that these are insubstantial changes that make it look more like the original. There's, there's not any vacancies anymore, but they feel that it's a good use of the space. And so that's, that's the bottom line. So I think that's, I'm going to recommend to the board that they approve this. And when the drawings come in for the building permit, I will look at them again and make sure that it meets the criteria that the design review sent.
All right, Ben, you have Ben? Danny?
Nope.
Amber? Steve?
No, I actually, I just would ask Karen to send our, our thanks back to the design review because this is exactly what we need from them.
Right.
And prepare to support what they recommend.
Did you put Charles?
I agree with the changes and request that I'm totally comfortable with and thought they were positive and to better manage the project.
Yes, sir.
Hi, can I ask a question on Brian Burke, thirteen Cliff Avenue? Does this pertain to the house at eleven Cliff Avenue?
No, sir. You should be at town hall at the zoning board of appeals.
Oh my God, I think there was a sign there that said us up here.
The Situate planning board.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Apologize.
Is it, is it too, is it too late?
It's never, never should.
They don't start till seven, so.
No, I'm barging.
Okay.
Yeah, they just, they just started at seven o'clock.
Just started, okay, thank you very much.
Sorry.
Oh, no problem, that's your phone.
Okay, here we go. I am going to accept the design review committee's recommendations included in their September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes for the building permit plans for six McDonald Terrace and find that the proposed changes outlined in the meeting minutes will more closely represent what was originally approved and to find the changes are in substantial in nature. Per condition eighteen of the mixed-use special permit in the village business overlay district for six McDonald Terrace, the final building plans stand by registered, registered?
Architect.
Architect, thank you. With the proposed changes added shall be reviewed by the town planner prior to the building permit being issued. Second, further discussion. Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, that was easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Will be rapidly along.
Yeah.
You on?
All right, so the true project is going very well. They're doing a mockup of what the building's going to look like. I indicated the planning board might be interested in going out to the site to look at it. So I will let you know when they tell me it's done and we'll arrange a time for us all to go out. The design review board also expressed an interest in looking at it too.
You say it might go to like a physical?
A physical one.
I don't watch it.
Yeah, it's not, not a mini.
No, it's, it's, it's almost, it's almost full scale.
Really?
Yeah, it's very cool. Yeah.
Full scale, can't be full scale.
Well, it's, it's.
So it's not a big house?
It's, it is, it's a size for a big house for, for one side.
Is that the thing that's sitting in the back?
Yeah, that's the thing, yes, that's the thing sitting in the back.
I do too.
And so I expressed, I expressed that you guys might be interested. But everybody wondered what was under the M B T A parking lot?
Okay.
There's buried tires, buried boulders, like he said, one of them was like eight feet, buried trees.
He buried treasure?
No, buried treasure.
The bodies.
Cars. They had to, they had to remove that stuff.
Isn't that unbelievable?
But we all wondered if anything was under there and the answer is yes.
That was, was.
I don't think it was, I mean, they, I saw one area and, you know, they had it excavated.
No, no hazard material.
No, no, no hazard. They had, they had one area that smelled like petroleum, they had it tested and it was fine. So they, they have been very.
A lot of petroleum, is that our little parcel being so?
Probably.
Well, what was it? Smith Auto Body was there.
Right.
As well as Frankie Litchfield.
Right. So, all right, so whenever the, I'll let everybody know in the mockup and we'll try to find a time. The walk on Anne Vonnell Road is done. In front of Carney Estates, that was one of their conditions. That walk is now complete. Seaside at Situate, we're giving C F Os and building permits. Patty and I went out there the other day for, we were out there for three and a half hours on a landscape walk and we marked up a plan for what was dead, what was, what was missing. And I placed, we put stakes in for thirty-one of the fifty trees that are part of the conditions. And it wasn't ready for the rest of it.
But those are mostly in the, in the front section there or?
They're all over the site.
All over the place.
All over the site. We, we did do some bargaining, but the part by Tilden Row was supposed to have a cleft rock and that we kind of all agreed it wasn't appropriate, so.
What is that?
It's a, it's a shrub. But all the planting is done there, well, the planting at the Tilden Row entrance looks good. And so we said, I said, you give me five red cedar for ten cleft rock. And they can be used in some of the places in, in the buffers in between units. And so they thought that was an acceptable deal and we located them in the field. I did use ten of my trees to, for some of those in between buffering as well. Because, you know, when you really walk out there, there's not much, if you have a pod here and a pod there, two backyards, there's not a lot of buffering in between.
And they're all staged. They've got a stage of what kind of trees are going to be there, so that's all done.
So we, we, I thought it was, I thought it was worthwhile.
As long as they don't kill the plants in the process. They're not well known for keeping these things alive.
Most places have irrigation, they claim a lot of stuff that has died has not been irrigated. So when I went out there last week to review one set of units for the permeable pavement, we had found that there was an irrigation line break over the weekend and it was quite a miss. So they had to pull up all the saw, redo it, regrade because it was saturated, saturated.
And this is all coming from ground level wells? The irrigation?
The irrigation, yes, they had three wells. It's none of it is counted to a one.
Maybe it's healthy.
All right. So I did a little switching of the schedule. This is just internal. But October 28th will now be the Seven New Driftway public hearing. And we'll have an immediate continuance on 533 Countryway to November 4th. If then, both people, Seven New Driftway wanted to be earlier and decided after I had a meeting with Mr. Chamsy and Mr. Chesia and Mr. Bjorkland that they really needed a little bit more time to work on 533 Countryway. So it's beneficial to both parties. So, next meeting.
Which is the 30th?
No, until the 14th.
October 14th is our next meeting. We're going to have the continued public hearing for the citizen petition. We'll have Man Hill Road. And do you want to talk about the lot shake by law? We think we found a way to make it very, very simple. And so right now, I'm having Neil Duggan review it before I send it back to our consultants. But we think we found something that'll work for the most egregious cases. And I think that's what we're targeting. So I'll put that on the 14th, too. All right. Did anybody look into, anybody thought of any items they wanted on the capital plan for master plan implementation?
If, if we were going to, I know one thing I was thinking of is if we're going to explore doing a zoning rewrite, would that be something that would have to go to capital?
No, zoning's not capital.
Okay, so that would be we just have to find money for consultants.
We have to find money for consultants. I, I, it has to cost more than 25,000 in the last five years. Zoning doesn't last five years.
Hopefully not. Master plan.
So, yeah, that's just putting in more money for consultants.
Sure. What kind of, does the planning board need to vote?
I think so.
For all these.
Something more than 25,000.
Some comes.
I did send an email today to the proponents of the marijuana citizen petition asking if they would like to meet based on what we said at the end of the public hearing. I asked them if they wanted to meet before the 14th. I, so I haven't heard back.
He won't.
He has a birthday.
It's right.
It's a public birthday, it's just.
Well, so I just, I sent an email and I'll arrange a meeting. If they want to have a meeting, you know, like we discussed, having town council and, you know, other people present, I will arrange that meeting if they want to come into.
He was, he was thoroughly advised by advisory to do that.
Well, so I, I reached out today and we'll see what happens.
All right, any thoughts?
No, I think that's it. The same old, go, go work it away.
Should have the right meeting?
Feel bad for them, should have said something earlier.
Oh, I know. But you know, like, when people come in like, oh, what are we doing here? I did.
All right, does anybody have anything else that they would like to?
Not particularly.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?